Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It being three o'clock of the city council work session agenda being Tuesday, November 2nd, year of our Lord, 2021, 3:00 PM. Invocations, who's gonna lead us in invocation will be council member Steve Thompson. So if everybody will please rise and we will proceed.
Heavenly Father, bless this day, bless this council. Watch over us as we make the decisions for the citizens of Odessa. God our wisdom and God our thoughts and let us do it in a kind and gentle way so that we do what's best for the city of Odessa. Bless all of our staff and this new training facility we're so proud of. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
You can be seated. Item one will be Animal Shelter Advisory Committee update. Susie Clark and City Secretary Grimalda.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give a quick report as you have on your table there, you have an animal shelter advisory committee list of all the members that sit on the board as well as the attached attendance sheet. I just wanted to keep y'all updated that reached out to the members and most of them do wish to continue serving except for Joy's travel. She will not be able to continue serving, so I will put that on the next agenda for council's consideration and I will forward those applications to y'all for those interested that are serving. I did not hear back any messages with Heather Silva, who is the representative of a, I believe, the Humanities Committee. So that is my report and I will turn it over to Susie Clark unless y'all have any questions. She'll give a quick update on the animal.
Have we still been having issues as far as the quorum?
There will be a meeting coming up in November and I did tell each member that there is an attendance requirement.
If you'd just be able to keep us updated because there's some things that the board has to be able to make decisions and I know that there's been some expression by the staff over there that without quorum, without the meetings, they haven't been able to proceed. So I've asked Ms. Grimalda to make the attendance before the council be aware of the attendance and see if we have to take action and make sure that the quorum doesn't become an issue. So thank you for that. Any questions?
Really, Kelly, isn't our next meeting December?
No, I believe we were gonna have it in November because of the December holiday.
Okay.
Again, Christmas off.
Yeah.
I apologize for my dress, I've been out chasing dogs today.
No, no, you're fine.
My name is Susie Clark, I'm the advisory board chair for Augusta Animal Control. First of all, I just wanna stand up here and say I'm grateful that Kelly, she has the best thing that's happened to Augusta Animal Control in the ten years that I've been serving there.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that.
She's a phenomenal mentor and she's straightforward, both what she wants and she makes it happen and I appreciate so much. When we let you guys know, we're having two vaccinations for next, one in the spring and one in the fall. They've been highly successful and we anticipate, you know, further community outreach and so forth. You know, this pandemic kinda winding down, we're kind of, you know, more people come out and vaccinate their dogs. And we're also having low-costs different parvo vaccinations made available to the public at their expense. In our last meeting, we shared updates and the progress and the excitement and the gratefulness for the new shelter. We're all just beside ourselves, we've been waiting for this to happen for a long time. We appreciate that. The new bill that passed regarding leash laws that goes into effect on January the 18th of 2022 will affect ordinances in the city. And so we are currently looking and reviewing the city ordinances specifically related to animals. We're also researching literature and data of enlarged cities, city ordinances regarding the litter's and breeding. There's been a tremendous growth in Odessa about the city and the county and also people are exiting the area. Dogs and cats are being left behind still in unbelievable numbers. The city ordinances that affect the county, I'm sorry, the city ordinances don't affect the county, the county animals do come into the city shelter. In the midst of all of this, how can we affect positive change for our community as a whole? And that is what we're working on.
Quick question. What ordinances do, does exist in the county? There isn't? Okay.
State law, any state laws that are out there, but as far as restraint laws, any vaccinations.
Another question, leash law, does that include cats? Does that include cats? Really? I was posed with that question 25 years ago and I never saw, how do you leash a cat? So, okay, but I was posed with that question 25 years ago, so when you brought that up, that really made me think of that. So another real question and I'll let you, the other one would be about, can you put it on the agenda as far as the advisory board of how can we proceed to be able to try to influence one way or another about the county and try to come up with any type of ordinance that would assist us? You know, spay, neuter and breeding, the dumping, I guess it's an issue. You know, it's worth a shot, you know, so if y'all could take that up at one point, you know, let's get the quorum situation resolved and then go forward and see if we can add that to the agenda and see if your advisory board can take that on and come up with any suggestions that we may be able to go forward and proceed in negotiating with the county and see if we can come up with something that'll be able to help, be a relief.
Yeah, in this last meeting, we really dealt into that and how, you know, we can, you know, when we don't have any laws to protect what's going on in the county, what can we do? So we're currently working on that. We're gonna be working.
Is it economics, is it going to a larger number of abandoned and dumped animals? Okay. Mr. Thompson, go ahead.
That's my question. The county can, they can affect an ordinance to help us out, can they not? They don't have to just follow state law, that's my question.
You know, I'm not positive on that because the county is under the state law, but the city is under the city ordinances, over the type of state law.
Well, Martha, you know the state laws, they, the state law does give the county commissioners the authority to enact ordinances.
That's my question.
It does give them that authority. Some of your commissioners will say it doesn't and some do, so that's kind of one of those legal issues.
So, yeah, so what I'd like to do is direct it to Natasha and I wish she'd get ahold of the, she'd get ahold of the county attorney and see what they think they can or can't do. I think it's very important, that's a huge issue and again, we're taking care of everything.
Let's get some, right now we got Natasha under a lot of things.
Yeah, I know.
Let her get over to that.
Just put it on the bottom of the list.
So let's let the advisory board take it over and then work together and then get to a point what, you know, what you can and do, reach out and invite one of the commissioners who's applicable to be able to work and then let's lay that groundwork and then once we come up with an instrument that we can work with, then we can take it over to our legal department.
Exactly. We absolutely wanna do what's in the best interest of the animals and we're also dealing with the fact that we need to be able to enforce what we're gonna have these laws and these ordinances as part of our city ordinance. We need to be able to have them empowered to feed these, you know, feed these dogs out and people need to answer, you know, what they're doing to these dogs. Currently, it's just difficult.
Well, here's another thing that I've been posed with the last six months is lane hens, lane egg hens. I think the surrounding counties around Ector County all allow it and I think that we passed an ordinance what, 25 years ago that we're dealing with the roosters and so we've outlawed that as far as an ordinance and been approached several times about re-looking at that and what we can come up with. I've asked all the parties, interested parties to, to come up with what they've seen at the state law and what other communities have adopted, yet none of them want to do the work, they want us to do it for them. So that's another thing that I may be asking with the advisory committee to look into and see what is going around and for the reason why the issue came up ahead is because what we saw during the pandemic and, and they want to use it as food source, but I can see how it can get out of hand really fast and so wanna proceed with caution and maybe that's something else y'all can put on your plate. Go ahead, Kinsel, any other questions?
I want to, Kelly, if you don't mind, you know, part of our, our problem that we have with the animal shelter does go back to the county. What would you estimate, about 40% maybe of the, of the animals that the shelter receives or originate from the county?
Well, with the restrictions that we put in place on intake, it's a balancing situation. Kelly?
Come up here.
Sure.
That way we can get your own record.
I should say my voice is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty loud, sorry.
But we gotta, we gotta be able to get your own record.
So, we're trying to follow all the national standards on best practices for shelters in being no-kill. No-kill shelters are considered anything 90% above sacred, okay? So there's still that 10% that you can euthanize animals. So the problem that we've run into, in order for me to try and move that direction, I have to restrict what comes in. So I run it about an 85% capacity because what goes out, when we have some come in, we've gotta move them through. If I fill the shelter to capacity to what we have even right now, I have no space and I have to euthanize what's inside. So you bring in a dog off the street, county brings a dog in off the street, no testing, no nothing, and now I have to turn around and go into my shelter and euthanize a healthy animal? Well, that makes no sense. So I run it at about an 85% capacity so that I have that ring to move. The problem that we're seeing right now is there is a lot of distemper, parvo, all kinds of diseases out there, non-vaccinated, all kinds of stuff like that. When we bring them into the shelter, just automatically bring them in, that's the cost of the city. Now I gotta treat them, do this, do that, do that. So I started restricting what we're bringing in from the county because if they don't have any laws out there, well, they gotta help us out over here. So if I have ring, they bring in a healthy animal, we'll take a look at it and bring it in. So we have reduced them number of what's come in from the county and we honestly have had a healthier shelter. With all the testing that we're doing, all the vaccinating we're doing, all the money that we're using towards the city, money towards these animals and restricting here, it's getting better. Now, I'm not saying that the county is to blame for all the distemper and parvo it's not, but there's a large portion of it out there.
So are you, are you testing in the shelter for that?
Yes.
So that's, that's a city expense?
That is a city expense. Any animal that comes in that we accept in because we have the space, the first thing they do is they get timberment tested, they get temperature tested. If there is a fever, if we suspect it all has a fever, they don't even come inside the building and we hold them until we can see if it calms down or whatever. And then we test them for distemper, parvo, giardia. We 40X test them for heartworm. We do all this testing before they walk in the door.
What's the average cost per animal? Just ballpark?
Just a ballpark? When you spay, neuter, vaccines, the whole nine yards, you're probably $200 an animal.
And then we have to euthanize and bring in?
So I've got, let's say I have 31 animals in the, in the adoption building right now, times 200, if that's a good figure, and then somebody comes in and says, I want you to take this dog. Well, which one do I euthanize in here? And we've been feeding them, that's, that didn't include feed. And, you know, it's kind of like, what, so that's why I don't run the capacity.
What's the, what's the identification, identification rate for, and how are you keeping track of that, you know, their county?
Because it's in our system, our computer system.
So when someone comes in and, there's no drop-off, right?
No.
Okay, so basically you're asking the resident for their, for their, okay.
We get their driver's license, their ID, any form of stuff.
And that's how you're identifying their?
And it's only for Ector County, so we won't take anything from Midland, Monahans and stuff and Midland won't take anything from Ector County. It's just Ector County, that's it. We're starting.
Good information.
But that doesn't include the ones that get dumped at the door?
No, like today. And that's what I was telling her today. I came back from lunch and somebody pulled in the parking lot, dumped the dog in the parking lot, took off as we were pulling in and it was chasing, trying to chase it out of the parking lot. So that's why I'm dirty because I chased it down.
The, the dog or the, or the car?
Well, I couldn't get the car, I'm not that kid. But I did get the dog, cute little dog. But that's what they do to us, they'll dump them right at the door and turn around, drive off. It's, it's crazy. And that's why too, just know that's probably why you probably get more complaints about strays because of the restrictions, but we, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna euthanize healthy animals or are we going to restrict and try and, we work with a lot of rescues, big rescues, Susie's one of them. And so we work with a lot of rescues to turn animals around and get them out as quick as we can. And we do a lot of events, we just did three events and we adopted 27 animals.
That's great.
So, but I took in 13 today.
Are we picking, are we picking up animals outside the city limits or the?
That's the county.
I understand, do they pick them, they pick them up?
They pick them up and send, and they'll bring them to us and they say, well, you take them.
So do, they have vehicles to pick them up? Okay, that's what I was curious about.
Right.
But if you have to treat those animals, do we give that cost back to the county or?
We're a dominant, we can negotiate, we can leverage that.
That's what we've been talking about, exactly. And I will, I will add that how imperative it is that these dogs are distemper and parvo tested because that keeps the shelter clean and operating. I mean, we've had it where, you know, you get a sick dog and then you get another sick dog and you end up shutting facility down and come in and you have a mass cleaning and nothing survives and, and, I mean, hats off because they are limited on staff, very limited on staff. There's never enough people to clean. I mean, that is a big, big job in order to keep these animals safe and get them adopted into, you know, a healthy environment. Because just because they don't test positive for parvo or distemper on day one doesn't mean they are carrying it and then they break with it in, you know, a few days and then we, and then we've adopted out a healthy, an unhealthy puppy out into the community, you know, and we're spreading disease. So, you know, they've just done a fabulous job and, you know, it's a happy place to, it's a happy place as it can be as old as it is. It's a good place to go. It's a good, healthy, sunny, good place.
We're getting there.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Any, any further discussion?
Ladies, thank you very much. We'll do whatever we can to help you.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item two, consider economic development agreement between ODC and Net Ops Communication LLC. Mr. Edgman?
You're not, Mr. Edgman.
Hi, I'm Tracy Gilte. Tim was not able to be with us this afternoon. I was just here to have, Mitchell Block is the gentleman that is, has requested this grant and he was going to be here to do a presentation for you guys, but he was unavailable today and he is asking if he could have a 30-day extension. And he's finishing finalizing some of his engineering and will have a more comprehensive projection on the costs and the timeline of the project within the next 30 days.
So it'll take 30 days to basically get that to the council?
Yes. He would ask, he would ask the council this today and we can, we can do more than 30 days for it.
Counsel, is there any, any discussion on this? Is everybody fine with the 30 days?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna move to item three. Consider purchase of traffic signal poles. Hal, didn't I not say that? I'm sorry, I was gonna start off the meeting with you, you just gotta remind me of that.
Next time.
From here on out, let's make a note on this and when we have Hal on the agenda, he starts off first regardless. There you go, Hal, go for it.
Awesome. This agenda item is for the purchase of signal poles. It's for four proposed signals. The first is Golden Yukon, two is Fodre and Tracer Monas, three is Dawn and 52nd, four is Fodre and 56th. The funding for these poles, the first two locations are funded through the supplemental project that council awarded for those two intersections. Then the final two sets of signal poles, I'm gonna use the street maintenance money for signal improvements. The total cost of these signal poles is $203,960.
Counsel, any discussion?
I just have one question, Hal. The one on Dawn and 52nd, when is that one expected to go up?
What I'm doing is I'm working on the plans for Golden Yukon, Fodre and Tracer Monas and Dawn and 52nd. I'm gonna bundle them all together as one package and put them out to bid. Six months?
Okay.
I, I've been told by the vendor that I shouldn't expect any undue delays for the signal poles, but I'm kind of holding my breath and by the time I go out, award the bid, get the contractor online, I'm, I'm thinking six months.
Okay, thank you.
Is that that area that we've had problems with, whether we've had the fatalities?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes, it is.
Counsel, any further discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question on, shouldn't the one on 56th and Fodre come out of that Fodre project? Shouldn't the funding for that pole?
Well, we certainly could, but what I wanna do is I, I wanna buy the poles now and, and make sure I have them ready to go by the time we go to construction so they're not delayed. So I figured I would just use the signal maintenance so I could buy them now. That's the only thing.
And is the light on Dixie and Yukon, is that in the city?
Golden Yukon.
Golden Yukon.
Golden Yukon, a couple of years ago, we took in Yukon Road. So Yukon Road is city maintenance, but it's surrounded by the county, but the intersection is ours.
Does it run from Barditch to Barditch or how's that?
Basically, yep.
And it goes all the way to the loop?
Uh, just past West County Road, like one intersection past West County Road is city maintenance on Yukon. So, yeah.
Pretty much the whole road, I mean, that's past the others.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, that's, that's ours.
I knew it was, it's Slaymar, but not that far west.
Yep. Just for a couple of years now.
Any further discussion? Hal, thank you very much. We want to item four, Floyd Gwynne Park Construction Update. Mr. Batten? Uh-oh, we got, we got visual.
Oh, my gosh.
Y'all know Kyle?
Hi, Kyle.
How you doing, Kyle?
Doing excellent, easel job.
Super, super high visibility project and a lot of fun. We've got a lot going on out there. If y'all been by lately, you might have seen that the parking lots are going in, which is probably one of the most visible things we've got going on out there. 30% of, almost 30% of the sidewalk, the perimeter sidewalk is going in and you'll see more of that happening in the next few weeks. They have all of the pedestals, which is the foundations for the pedestrian lighting along the sidewalk. They're all in except for six. It has six more to go. A lot of activity on the northern parking lot that's been a brand-new parking lot, it's expanded. The curbing cover is up, they're out there today doing the rolling in the subsurface, ready to go for laying on their second surface, then they'll do their emulsion in the asphalt. So that'll be the first big parking lot that'll be finished will be on the north side. Then they will move to the south side. They'll do the one that's at 10th. After they get along 10th, then they'll expand the one that's on West County Road in front of the gym and that will be expanded all along the entire perimeter of the park along West County Road. The last one that they will do is the one in front of the swimming pool, that's our most problem parking lot. We've got a drainage problem that's there, a swell that's been backed up by debris that silt basically that has landed there for many, many years. The water backs up onto the parking lot. There'll be a new swell cut and we will expand the fence of West Side Swimming Pool, we'll go out about another 20 feet. Then there's gonna be a swell that'll take all the water across the park and will dump on Park Street. So they just about got that swell completed and the baseball fields are all to grade. If y'all been by there, you've seen a lot of activity going on with the baseball fields, the priority for completion. The park itself and phases, it'll be the baseball field is what we're trying to get finished first. They're about 30% ahead of schedule on most of the construction. They're 10% completed on the restroom concession stand building. They had to get some permits, their first testing failed and they had to go back and do some compaction on their subsurface for the foundation. They've got all that taken care of and now the wing balls are going up on the restroom concession stand building and they'll progress and get caught back up. What I'm really excited about is that they still are about 30% ahead of schedule and that's very unusual for construction.
Knock on wood.
And under budget.
Happily knock on wood.
Considerably under budget.
Steve, you're saying that you're moving water from our south side and you're moving it west?
Yeah, it's gonna go right through there.
Mm-hmm. So you're moving, you're moving the water north and out to park?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
Some of it.
It's a long way.
And there's, well, there's gonna be a peak right here and some of it that lands in this area will be diverted and go this way.
Okay, so we're dumping nothing to the west?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Kind of hated to say since all this, none of that's our property.
Well, that's why I was gonna ask, you know, legally you can't do that. The other question is the compaction, are we still using the, the south side, the north, the southeast side parking lot as a transition for ECSD bus?
Southwest.
This one's half.
So have we, did you anticipate that for the excess weight or we just going with something normal?
Well.
Well, because years ago when we were doing that, we were having a lot of breakage in the asphalt and we, we asked the county to, let's fix it, but you're gonna participate because you're using it as a transfer site. ECSD was using it as a bus transfer for their students.
Oh, it's, it's their parking for everybody that works at the bus garage now.
Okay, so.
Everybody filled up.
But they're not, they're not using it, they're not using the parking lot to the southeast?
The big one is southeast.
Yeah, that used to be a transfer site. No, okay.
Pretty much this one.
Okay.
What I'm seeing now, and this is all gonna be excavated all the way down to the base material. We're completely pulling all that off asphalt, just like you said, it's all cracked.
Yeah, yeah, but, but, you know, years ago, the southeast was, ECSD used that as a transfer and we were having a lot of issues there. And so, okay, so basically they're using the southwest, that's theirs.
That's what I've seen so far.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna have to give them a notice because there's a good 60, 80 cars up there a day or so. So we'll give them at least a two-week notice. We've also talked about trying to do it maybe during Christmas break to see if we can't rush in there maybe, but I don't think they can get it done that quick. We'll just get them noticed. They, you're just like never in elsewhere and we might have this one if they wanna walk that far, we might have this one completed after they can move if they want it, but I doubt it. Yeah, that's the case. A lot of activity and it's a beautiful project, it's gonna be an illegal activity to finish.
Counsel, any questions?
Do you think the ball fields will be open for the season?
March.
In March?
That's, that's when they're gonna get complete. Now, we're putting sod down, it just depends on when the sod comes out of dormancy and the condition that the field will be in. You know, if we're real lucky, we could maybe, look at the end of their season possibly because if they're on a tight timeframe as far as play, that sometimes they're finished as early as June.
We'll be starting in, approximately January, February, March, season starts, we'll play through May, city tournament through, Indiana, June.
So probably will not get to play?
I, I can't say, you know, if we have an early spring and it comes out of dormancy, I'm not making any promises until we get just a little further along and see how healthy the sod's gonna come back.
I understand.
And, I mean, if it was July, you can put sod down and seven days later you can play on it, but it's gonna be in dormancy, so we'll just see how quickly comes out of it.
Okay.
But the good idea is it's gonna be sod and it's not a spring situation where you would have for a whole year, so we're all gonna sod down and it'll come out well nice.
Would you just use Kama Bermuda or?
No, 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 this is, this is sports turf, it's a tiff turf.
Tiff turf, yeah. I thought maybe that's what it was.
Does great.
Yeah.
Steve or Michael, have you guys been able to put something on the website to show an update yet?
I've got, I have a meeting with Martha to, and actually, I'm with Martha to make that happen.
Oh.
If we could, because you get a lot of questions about what's going on and, you know, when's it gonna be finished and what's, you know, what are these things sticking out of the ground and?
I have to give an update every Tuesday to the manager of Rosa's on West County Road. I see Brown Scott there and sees that he needs to give an update. It'd be a lot easier for me if I could just say you go and get the rest.
Me too, so that's what I'm saying, if, if you could, I think the community would appreciate it and.
They will.
Just to the council who does not have any reason, um, to drive down West County, I would encourage you to go by because just watching it grow has been interesting. So just take some time to go by and see it, it's, y'all have done a great job.
It's gonna be really nice.
It will.
Great addition, so that's, for sure.
Let's, let's stay, let's hopefully stay under budget.
Yeah, it, it is a lot.
I'd like to redirect some of that money and, uh, uh, and address the, uh, the auditorium.
Steve, what, what is the length on the walking path?
We're just this much short of, um, it is.
I thought it was pretty close.
It's like nine tenths.
Okay. Let's just call it a mile. It's gonna be lighted too, oh yeah, I can walk it.
Or take the bigger steps, that'll, that'll offset it.
And it's gonna be a little wider than normal, right, Steve?
It's every bit of eight feet, eight feet is a minimum and, um, we're, it's gonna have a real rough texture on it. I always, I like to do a heavy room finish so people don't trip and fall, something slick, so it'll be pretty rough and we, we gotta rough finish. But if it's gonna be enlightened, uh, uh, that's gonna be a good and a bad thing because it'll be a great thing here, the man that we do it, every walking trail on that's it, everybody's gonna love it. But it'll, it'll be very nice, very nice.
I'd send you some of it.
Were we able to, I know several people have tied you and I down and asked about the pickleball to add that to the tennis courts?
Yes.
Is that?
I already, I did a change order and, and that's gonna be coming, uh, when they come back to put the nets up. Uh, we're not gonna allow them to put the nets up just yet because the second that we put nets up, there's gonna be people playing. The stripes are already down for basketball, volleyball and tennis, then two pickleball, two pickleball courts will go on each tennis court.
Okay, so what is pickleball?
I had no idea either, Mayor, until they cornered us.
I'm imagining somebody throwing a pickle at each other, so what is it?
Do that on the grass.
Many, many years ago, there, it was, it's a short game and, uh, it's kinda like tennis, but you use a big paddle. And, uh, there's, uh, it, it is a short version of tennis basically and kind of table tennis, so.
Played with a heavier wiffle ball.
Yeah.
So there was not a lot of bounce to it on a shorter court, so it's, uh, it's a very popular sport in the, uh, senior sector.
Hello.
Hello. No, my aunt, like, I said, my aunt's an expert, but she is a senior.
Is that what's going on at the senior, at the senior citizens' pickleball?
And they say it's a big sport.
I'm gonna Google it and see what.
They say it's a big sport out at the country club, you know, that they.
Out of broken hips.
One of the largest national tournaments is coming to Horseshoe Bay, two hundred and sixty-six entries, uh, of pickleball players. You gonna be in that tournament?
No.
Since we're all seniors.
It's huge, all resort areas, it's huge.
Our Christmas holiday is gonna be one of them.
Everybody's going in that direction, every country club, everybody.
Wow. Any chance that we can get that national, uh, tournament here?
No, but just four horse. A lot more horse than just.
The Horseshoe Bay, one of those resort communities, they just, they committed to it, they built a bunch of them.
Wow, okay, uh, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Great job, great job, great job for holding that up, thank you.
Yeah, excellent.
All right, learned something new, pickleball.
He came up here and did Nashville.
Not too much pickleball down there in the Bobby West for sure.
I never played it either.
More like, uh, what's that, dodgeball. Uh, we're gonna move to item, uh, number five, consider, uh, consideration to engage in Parks and Corporation to build, rebuild Bob Derrington Water Recreation. Mr. Kerr?
Definitely, Mayor, Council, um, so this first item we have for you is a, the reconstruction of a, uh, one of our mechanical bar screens at the Bob Derrington Water Recreation Plant, our wastewater plant. And so bar screens, these mechanical bar screens are at the front of the plant, if the water's first coming in, we'll pull out objects and things like that. These will collect, catch objects that are, actually I think it's four inches, but it was half inch in large, uh, and they pull them out of the water so that you're not running them through the plant. They, these objects can be damaging to equipment and they're really not bi- not generally biological, they're not gonna break down, that type of thing. So we have two of them at the front of the plant, one of them, uh, I think we've provided some pictures with the package, I hope you've seen, but, uh, so one of them did become damaged this year. It's been in service since twenty twelve and, uh, so we've, uh, gone back to the manufacturer and asked them for a quote on rebuilding the unit. And so what they do is they supply out materials, they come out to the site and they rebuild the unit on site so we can bring it back into service. Uh, that's really the most expeditious method for us. You can purchase a brand-new unit and replace it, but that is, uh, higher cost, uh, takes a lot longer, a lot, a lot way longer for that, that thing, right? So, uh, the cost on this is one hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. And the funds we're looking to use for this are funds that, uh, were allocated by council for repair of our, uh, grit collector. So the grit collector is gonna take quite a bit more work than we have, uh, involved in it at this time and it's a little more, uh, something that we really need to do quicker than the other ones, so, uh, we're gonna use those funds for this, this repair.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Is there a normal life on one of these strings? I mean, two thousand twelve's nine years old, so is that about what you get out of one or?
No, we probably would hope to get about twenty years or so out of them, but, uh, this one had something come in and, uh, and, and knock it out, we got hammered pretty hard from what we see there.
Yeah, cause I was, you know, I was just thinking for, I mean, that's fifty thousand dollars, but it's, will, will, will this new refurbishment have that kind of life, you think?
It should.
Okay, that'd be my question though.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Kerr, I had a question, just on the, uh, I was looking at your, at the, uh, list that I have here, the sheet. It says on here on the, I know it's kind of a trivial deal, the, the shipping F O B free onboard. Do you know if that's gonna be, um, where the customer pays for the shipping or, cause I know shipping, the freight's going up quite a bit, I know for us it has, I mean, it's, it's a big, uh, it's a big issue for us, so I just wonder if that's gonna be paid by the, by the customer, which is us, or that, that can be paid by the supplier?
That, my understanding would be that that's, that we, we receive it at our site, paid, sorry.
Okay, good, that saves a lot of money.
Any further questions? We're gonna move on to item six, consider award bid for W T P Rehab and Miscellaneous Upgrades to Garni Companies Incorporated.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, this is the bids that, we have received bids, uh, for the reconstruction of the water treatment plant. Uh, the bids for this project were opened on October twenty-first. Two responsive bids were submitted for the project. The lowest responsive bidder was Garni Companies Incorporated from Missouri with an office in Midland, Texas, in the amount of seventy-one million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-four cents. Uh, bids are within the budget amount for the project. Corolo Engineers Incorporated is the design consultant and city, and, uh, they and city staff have reviewed the bids and recommend award for the bid to Garni. And reserving approximately nineteen percent for contingency on the project.
What did we originally anticipate, ten on the contingency? Cause we maxed out at ninety-five.
Right.
And then, uh, we talked about the contingency.
The, the consultant in their estimates continued to maintain some contingency in terms of what the price may be. The estimate for construction was eighty-three million and so the bids have come in almost, uh, well, twelve million dollars less than that.
Okay.
Counsel, do we have any questions? So that leaves you fourteen, fourteen million off of contingencies roughly, twenty percent of seventy million.
Twenty-one.
Right, yes, it's gonna be, uh, so we're at, uh, there's another paragraph here, but, uh, additional, it's eighty million, so, yes, it's about fourteen million dollars.
Yeah, and with, uh, what is it, what do they say, I mean, nobody knows this, these supply chain issues?
Yes.
I mean, that's why I wanna make sure there's enough there, cause that's a little scary right now for everybody.
So the, the overall, and so I'll go ahead and, uh, touch on the next paragraph, which is further, Corolo Engineers has provided a proposal for phase four of the project. The proposal includes project administration, office services during construction, field services during construction and post-construction and special services in the amount of nine million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Uh, so those, uh, those amounts plus the contingency is the ninety-five million dollars, uh, allocated for the project, um, or at least called for in the, uh, the C O issuance. So happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Uh, Hushma Allen with, uh, Corolo is here, if you have any questions for them specifically.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Anybody wanna address anything to Mr. Corolo? I think we're good. Uh, thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
I went through this a lot quicker than I thought. Do I have a motion in a second, uh, to go into executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one, to consult with attorneys?
Sound aid.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swann, second by Councilmember Mata, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Counsel is now going into executive session and we will return. Seeing that no action was taken in executive session, do I have a motion to come back to general session?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Sprawls, second by Councilmember White, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay, motion passes, we are back in general session. Seeing that there is no more business before this city council, do I have a motion to adjourn? I'm sorry. Yeah, I did say that, I said that, we had no action taken in executive session, do I have a motion to come back into general session? No, we already have a second and we've already proven we've taken a, a, an official vote.
Who's on first?
So, but I, I did say that, yeah, so, and I spoke clearly into the mic, so you can verify it. So seeing that there is no more, uh, business before this city council in this work session, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sound aid.
I have a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Swann, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay, motion passes unanimously, everybody being going home, be careful and stay warm.
Thank you, sir.